Ron, the building inspector, Ron Wilson is also here if you have any questions. Basically, we are late adopting. We were supposed to adopt them in 2019. And then COVID hit. The city did adopt the same codes, but they became more stringent and added a few back in that were deleted from the state code. So basically, the county will be going back to the same code. Um, and we will be taking the energy tables from 2009, which was allowed by the state of Tennessee. So if anybody has any questions, Ron is here. But we are late and we will be fined if we do not expedite this sooner than later. And I realize my days are numbered, so I forgot about it last week to place on the agenda for today. But I will be placing this on the agenda to vote on next week.
Okay.
You might have any questions?
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Wilson?
And we are already practicing this because nothing's changing. So nothing will change for any of the subs or the builders. And none of the fees changed, which we probably with inflation should have changed the fees. But I guess the building inspector chose not to because of inflation. They didn't want to hinder building or hinder the building industry. But we should have went up on codes. So that's something for the next commission to think about. I hate to increase free fees or even speaking about that. But with inflation comes more costs. So y'all might want to look at that in the next four years. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Commissioner Alford.
Second's doing well.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I have quite a bit to go over at this moment. First off, I'd gotten some complaints from a constituent about the water. Cleveland Utilities apparently raised their rates. They're concerned with the economics at this point of where we're at. The emergency service committee met last week and voted a couple of recommendations. First, the committee voted to recommend beginning billing hospitals on or around August 15th, 2022. For a time over 30 minutes spent on what's stretcher time spent on campus by the ambulance. After 30 minutes, the hospital would begin to pay 300 and any hours beyond will be will also be billed $300. The motion included providing a report in a letter to hospitals for the amount they would have been billed in July under the new policy outline the new or outlining the new policy. So this letter should explain the billing process and what else involved in it. Mr. Chairman, I place this recommendation on the August 15th, 2022 voting session agenda. The committee also voted to submit a letter to Congressman Chuck Frazier and Senator Bill Hagerty detailing detailing the challenges ordering new vehicles and obtaining parts to repair our vehicles. I placed this recommendation on the August 15th, 2022 voting session agenda. And I believe that dealt with the computer chips more more of less what we were discussing on that. The last item that the committee voted on was to not allow shorts to be worn by emergency service departments. Also place this recommendation on the August 15th, 2022 voting session agenda. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Janet Pace.
It's on?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you. I asked Mr. Hughes to let me speak because I read on the agenda that Republic, that y'all were going to vote on this special waste. Uh, I have here, I took this from Republic's website. I have been looking at Republic's website since 2019. They've changed three times. This, the first one said that they could operate landfills with no odors. The second one was about the community, about providing clean air, helping provide clean air and safety for community. But this is what I want to read to you. It says, "Environmental justice is an important aspect of our ongoing commitment to being a leader in sustainability." "We have grounded our approach to this topic in line with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's EPA's definition of environmental justice." It says in parentheses, "The fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies." This does not include my community. I would like for Republic, it goes on to say, "We regularly look to raise the bar in keeping communities clean and safe." "Our standard enterprise-wide approach allows us to manage longer-term environmental and social risks with a system of checks and balances that empowers local company leaders to take action for the long-term benefit of our environmental goals, community relations, and financial performance." Uh, and the reason why I say this does not include my community. I do not live right next to the landfill. I'm the third road over. But the whole month of June, which I already gave y'all a copy of where I wrote down that I had sickening sour dumpster odor at my house for all days, all the day at a time. Uh, all the way, I spoke to y'all on June 27th and gave y'all a copy of this. And before I came to that meeting, the odor was there. I explained to y'all that odor produces gas. And Mr. Rourke came before y'all and said that the ammonia was running high and it was running high the whole month of June and it was running high before then. I had odor, garbage odor on July 13th. I had sour dumpster odor on August the 3rd. So my community has not been included in what they say that they will do. And I would like for y'all to hold them accountable. And special waste is not something that you want for your community. Exit 20 is going to be a boomer, just like Pal Huff Parkway. But it will not be as long as you allow Republic Services to be controlled of that neighbor. I've already gave you a map that I took right from TDEP, which shows you the circle of a mile that includes your new industrial park that you want to bring businesses to. You need to take that into consideration because the odor and the gas will travel immensely within that one mile circle if they do not contain it with cover. I also want to say that when it rains heavy and oh, I can't remember what day it was, but oh, it poured down rain at my house. Well, when it rains, we get the sludge odor that we had for days on end. I do not know if it's caused because it washes crevices in the mountain that they've got there or because it's a lack of cover to begin with. But when it rains, we have that odor in my neighborhood. There was not an account taken into account, the fact that I live on the side of a hill. It goes down into a valley. And you cannot stop the odor coming down that valley. It's that science. It's the same thing I try to tell people. I hear people on Thomas Road speaking because sound travels. And they don't even have to be loud. And it bounces off of my wall back behind me. It will bounce back to me. That's science. I want y'all to take this into consideration when you vote on your special waste regulation. And I would also like to say that this, uh, uh, or income with respect to development, uh, the fact that they will not take cash, that is discriminating against people that don't believe in cards or can't. I know people that, uh, get their social security on a card and go right to Walmart and cash it out because they don't want it on a card. I have a card, but I do not, I don't have a social security card. I have a bank card. But I don't want to use it at the landfill for $5 because I got $5 cash. As a matter of fact, I pay cash for everything. And I don't think that that is, should be made that we should have to suffer that. And y'all can do something about this. Y'all are, this is a county-owned landfill. We pay taxes. Y'all should take into consideration what we are telling you. Uh, and like I say, it's not just me, the immediate neighborhood. You have it going around. There's other people. I already spoke to y'all and nobody's listening. Nobody's listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pace. Oddly enough, I did get some contact or was contacted this weekend over some.
Pass.
Janice Pass.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am sorry.
And I would like to say that tomorrow I will be married to the same man for 49 years. I would like to make it 50.
But again, but thank you again, and sorry about the mispronouncing there. But anyway, I did have some complaints over the weekend, so I do know what you're talking about. But otherwise, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Commissioner Pete.
I had some questions about the, uh, one of the resolutions that you're putting on there, Commissioner Hughes, for next week. Um, I, I thought we sold the hospital and we didn't have any, uh, rights to tell private entity what they could do or they couldn't do. And also, I don't know that this is legal. And before we put it to vote on a resolution, I'd like to get some clarification from legal to make sure that that is even legal for us to charge. That'd be like me going to the doctor's office and charging them for my time or going in any of these county buildings in here and these offices that I have to stand in line for an hour to get my tags done, going up there to her and saying, hey, you owe me for 30 minutes of my time. Um, because I don't think this should have taken but 10 minutes. Um, I have stood in this line for an hour. Or even going to our county courthouses and waiting on the judge to call my name, which doesn't happen, but hey, it could. I'm just saying, I, I know a lot of people that take a whole half day off of work and then all of a sudden they gotta stay past the recess lunch to the afternoon. So should they be allowed to tell the judge, hey, I can't help you had all these people in the first half of the day, but I'm going to charge you $300 for the rest of my day? So I don't know that this, there's any precedent to do this or any legality to it whatsoever. So I will not be voting on this next week until we get a legal opinion to whether or not this is even legal. I mean, I may, maybe trying to scare them or something into that. But I would have done a little research before I threw it on the ballot, just so that we know what's legal, what's not legal. It just doesn't sound like it's on the up and up to me. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Pete, honestly, we didn't say hospital. We said hospitals. So we're talking about all of them. I, I don't know which one you're actually fast finding to actually, but a sudden point. I also, the county attorney was in the meeting, in a meeting. And in fact, hopefully she'll be here next week to be able to explain. Otherwise, county attorney has been spoken to.
Okay. Mr. Pete.
But that's inferring that she was okay with it while she was in that meeting. If she didn't give an opinion, then she was not okay with it. Or she could have been okay with it, but we don't know because she's not here. So until she is at a meeting and tells it's okay, I won't be voting on it.
She should be here on her voting session.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Something I'd say, if I go to that hospital and I'm in there and I owe my bill, I'm going to have to pay it. If I don't, they're going to sue me. I don't know what that has to do with it either. But the same difference, they take our trucks up there and use them for patients' rooms and use their paramedic to take care of them for three or four hours. They need to get charged for it. And, uh, it's not only the Canova, but anybody else, any other hospital that does it. But, uh, don't, don't tell me we can't charge them. We can charge them too. Send them a bill. That's what we're going to have to do to make them stop.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Commissioner Davis, then Commissioner Winters.
I don't think anybody's arguing the point that long waiting times happen at the hospital. The point that's being argued is there's no agreement between any hospital, whether it's the one in Cleveland or in Chattanooga, that states that we are going to charge them and have they agreed to pay that. So has the county attorney in any meeting ever stated that she agreed with payment or charging the hospital? That's the question, I guess, that we're asking. And Mayor, do you have any input on this topic?
Well, first of all, you're not going to get the attorney to say you can't do something publicly. Then when we have a lawsuit, they use her words against her. But she will be giving you an opinion, a confidential attorney-client opinion in the next few days. And that's not to be construed either way, but just please understand whenever you don't get a black and white answer in a public meeting is because of potential lawsuits down the road. I don't personally think we can do what's being suggested. I can definitely tell you it wasn't suggested by us. It's sort of like moving the courthouse. You can vote to move it, but it won't get moved. We have a problem. We have a problem. Any viewer in business, you know, there is a problem with employee vacancies and especially in healthcare. We have a problem in it with our ambulance service, paramedics, the hospitals, not one hospital, but all hospitals have a problem. Nursing homes have a problem. You're on the nursing home board. If you ask recently how many vacancies they have, it is a problem. Fighting in public isn't going to fix that problem. A tit for tat with a hospital is not going to fix that problem. We've had discussions with them. The one meeting has been had. It was my understanding we were going to follow up with some data that we had collected and get back with them. And that's not occurred yet. I know it's politically correct to take on some big corporation. That doesn't mean it's always right. That's the hospital in Cleveland. And it's the same situation at other hospitals. I've also passed by Erlanger and seen our ambulance is sitting there. It's a problem everywhere. I don't know what the answer is. If anybody does, I hope they run for president against Biden the next time because he clearly doesn't have the answer. So all I'm telling you is folks, a tit for tat with a hospital is not going to fix this. I can't tell you how many vacancies they have, but I can tell you it's a lot. So you're going to get them coming back saying, well, county didn't do this, county didn't do that because we've got those problems. And what is that going to accomplish? We've got to work together with them. Now, do we need to bring it to their attention? We have, and this public forum last Friday, I'm sure has brought it to their attention again. I'm not saying that's bad, but telling someone to start billing them whenever we don't have an agreement, you can't bill the clerks for standing in line for an hour because you don't have an agreement with that clerk that if you stay longer than 10 minutes, you can bill us. You've got to have that kind of a thing in place. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the attorney, so hopefully my words can't be used against us. But since I was asked, I'm telling you folks, this is not the way to work on a problem that everybody in Bradley County, everybody in Tennessee, everybody across this nation has, especially in healthcare. I've been telling you that for months and it's not just our ambulance service or it's not just this hospital. It's everywhere. I haven't answered your question and I don't think you will get that answer publicly from her, but you will get an opinion from her in the next few days. But folks, think about this next Monday. It's not the way to go. I promise you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Davis.
How many, how many times have we presented this problem to, to Nova?
Well, I'll, I'll take on that. Uh, during COVID, there were lots of discussions. Of course, my discussions that I have with them sometimes aren't pleasant, but they're not in the public. Uh, I have brought it to their attention and I have gotten things back from them brought to my attention. And so I know how that tit for tat works. But at the end of the conversation, I've always assured them that we will continue to try to work together as opposed to doing it publicly. So the discussions have been had. Now, the COVID is sort of behind us and things haven't gotten better. But again, the vacancies at any of these institutions, how many floors are closed at our nursing home today? And they're closed not because we don't have patients. They're closed because we don't have employees. It's because COVID is over. The employee situation is still there across the board. So to answer your question, there have been several. There's only been the one official meeting. And I know it was mentioned that so-and-so wasn't there. We didn't want it to be in the public's eye. We wanted it to be a meeting between county people and hospital people. And our intentions from that meeting were to go forward with follow-up meetings. Now, I'm sure it can be said that, well, it's been going on long enough. Yeah, but the problem that everyone has hasn't gone away. It's, it's really the employee situation is no better than it was a year ago or even possibly two years ago, might even be worse. And I don't know why. None of us know why. It was a big deal during the election. And I only, my response always was, do you have a better answer? No one has an answer for this problem that is in every, every single organization, every single corporation or, or whatever you want to call it, but especially in healthcare. People are burnt out. People are overworked. They're paying tremendous amounts of money to get people to work over shifts, extra shifts. Lots of things are being tried, but so far, nothing has solved the problem. So back to your question, lots of discussions, but there's just been no solution to the problem yet.
So from my understanding from, uh, what Commissioner Hughes said, uh, he was in a meeting with Canova. What date was that meeting? What date did that meeting take place? So on the 14th of July, we met with Canova and you came out feeling like it was okay to bill them because you've met with them one time.
What I understood from the attorney at the time was to make sure that they understood what our intent of being there was. We made that intent several times. In fact, that was worded more times than I care to even count. However, that was when I came out of the meeting, whenever they were discussing the fact that they were going to get a time clock and clock in for patients on, coming in on a stretcher and then whenever they left the stretcher. So they understood something in that or they wouldn't need a time clock to clock in and clock out their patients.
Has the time clock been installed yet?
I have no clue. That's not on me. That's on the hospital. I don't think it's Bradley County's responsibility to take care of a private organization unless you have other.
But we're going to, we're going to bill a private organization and, uh, but we haven't checked to see if they've installed the time clock to compare the data that we have submitted to them versus what they have in terms of wait time.
Because we have already put things in place to be able to keep up with that time. It's documented two different ways, one with non-one center and then through our reporting system.
Was a follow-up meeting scheduled to discuss anything before we decided that we were going to place on the agenda to bill them?
The simple facts was is what they were told was that we would have a meeting with the EMS or emergency service meeting. And then it would be put in place at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioner Winters, Commissioner Cry, Commissioner Thompson, and Commissioner Slater. Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I served on this committee and voted with the majority, but the majority was doing just what we've said here today. Uh, we wanted to get the point across that this, the hospital needs to come across the table and let's come up with, with a solution here. Maybe the solution is how we deal with space, but, uh, there was no movement at that point to charge anybody $30,000. It was saying what the, what the expense was to the taxpayer, with the taxpayer paying what the time that these people were sitting in their, in their vehicle, waiting to bring them in. So the whole point of the impact of this, and that's why we got a majority on that, was to go to the hospital and have such a meeting that we're talking about here. It is a problem. Uh, we don't have enough ambulances. We have people that are complaining to us individually and all of us collectively. What can we do about this? So this is, this is, as has been said here, that as a committee basically put together what it would cost if we were collecting. Obviously, we're not going to move on collection to a private entity without legal direction. And that's what we said with, with our attorney. But at this point, it's, it's getting to what we've all said needs to happen is us, either this committee or, uh, the mayor and his team, whoever, sit down and let's, let's work this out. Because we do have people sitting and ambulance is waiting to get in. And I have a sister that's in the hospital in Oak Ridge. Uh, she had to get a special ambulance to get her there. I know the importance of, of the ambulance getting you there on time and getting you two people that can save your life. So it's a big, it's a big issue. But, uh, I think the impact of the $30,000 was just to say what it would be if we do that collection. I don't think this majority would go with a collection at that. But we want to get the impact back from the, the information back for them, what they can do. If there's rooms up there, maybe there's a way we could get these people into those rooms that get some care that isn't the perfect care that they want to have doing, but there's got to be further dialogue in this. I don't think any of us were expecting to send that bill. But the 15th was a deadline to say, let's, let's, let's talk about this and get an answer, get some answer. So we got.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Commissioner Cry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd just like to make a few comments. One, going back to the beginning or the genesis of the issue, and it goes back to the budget. Uh, I've been here about eight years now and I can recall about seven of those eight years. There's, there's been a plus or minus million-dollar uh, shortage on the projection of income from the ambulance service. Uh, I'm no, I'm, I'm retired from private business now, but you can't stay in business doing your job with that kind of loss. How the mayor manipulates the numbers and comes up with a balanced budget with that kind of a shortfall is beyond me. But he did it and does it, and I congratulate him. But, uh, this is just one of the issues we were going for to straighten this nonsense out where the taxpayers aren't getting stuck. Uh, there's a federal law here on a hospital's duty. Once a patient arrives on hospital property, the patient is the legal responsibility of the hospital. Now, let that soak in. It's not EMS, it's not Bradley County. It's the hospital's responsibility by federal law. There's been up to four of our ambulances parked up there at one time. We had a sheriff's deputy off of Upper River Road on a call a few months back that had a heart attack, called for an ambulance. Couldn't get an ambulance for 30 minutes at least. I sure think that's pitiful. And part of the reason they can't get the employees to, um, work there, that's not my problem. That's their problem, Erlangers and all of them. I suspect if they figure out how to pay people a decent wage, it wouldn't be a problem. But, uh, what's been hap, what's happening here, they, uh, EMS personnel are asked to, to remain with the patient if the hospital staff's busy. Well, when you're, when you're short like they are, they're always busy. Our ambulances are state-of-the-art. They're actually rolling emergency rooms when you look at one and determine what, what they're capable of doing. So they sit there, keep the patient for an extended period of time until they can rotate in. Consequently, they can't make the calls that need to be made. The, uh, they have that duty of cure, but EMS personnel have no such duty under federal law. Again, federal law says a hospital does it. It's their responsibility when that ambulance rolls into that parking lot. And you know, 20, 30 minutes is an acceptable period of time. You've got to unload, take them in and fill out paperwork and all of that. But beyond that, that's not acceptable in my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cry. Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Slater.
First, now, Mayor, I don't agree with you. That eight votes won't move the courthouse. Uh, next of all is, um, this, this, uh, commission has committed for one reason, that is to make recommendations back to the commission as a whole. And we hope that when we make a recommendation, that it, uh, will show that we, we have done some work on it and we have had meetings. Like I said, they had a meeting with the hospital. Now we've had a meeting with the committee. And, uh, and what we recommend and what we want to recommend, I would say, what we talked about anyway was, uh, billing for the $30,000. And, uh, I don't have a problem with that whatsoever. If they owe us and they've used us, then we bill them. It's just that simple. We can sit here and talk about it every, every meeting if we want to, but if we don't do anything, well, nothing's going to happen. If you send them a bill, you get their. If you send them a bill, you get their attention.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the first part of the EMS meeting and then had to leave. The first thirty minutes of that meeting, and you're welcome to go back and look at the meeting online, was meant talking about the shortages that we have within EMS. That we can't hire people, we've exhausted all of our means of trying to hire people. The data that I'm interested in is how many ambulances are sitting every day because we don't have manpower to fill those ambulances. While we're not responsible for the Tenova, Memorial, anyone else hiring employees, we are responsible for EMS filling their roles. And whether they can't be filled because of leadership, because of pay, whatever, we do have that responsibility. So my request is that we start tracking how many ambulances are sitting every day, every shift, that cannot be on the road because we don't have manpower to fill those ambulances. And I would like to see that data.
Thank you, Commissioner Slater. Commissioner Hughes, Mr. Davis, thank you, Mr. Peak.
A lot of that, as far as employee shortages, has been, it's a nationwide problem. A lot of it comes with different reasons, it's same as the hospital being shorthanded. My argument is this, is, and you actually touched on it, how many vehicles are we shortage? We were told we had a severe shortage, shortages of paramedics. It is not helping for our paramedics to, what few we have, to be stuck up at the hospital, or any hospital, waiting, that, that is a disservice to our taxpayers, our citizens of Bradley County. And it is not our responsibility to keep up a private organization, as far as I know. And if I'm wrong, that, please somebody tell me how. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in the resolution, we, uh, mentioned, or Commissioner Hughes mentioned that this will be for hospitals, so more than one. Um, have we met with Erlanger Memorial, or Parkridge? Or are we just going to lump them into this resolution without having conversations with them about their current wait times?
Mr. Hughes?
That was the intent of the labor, or that was what the intent was for the later, was notify the other hospitals.
So we're going to notify them without meeting with them and having a conversation with them, and trying to work this out before we present it to the commission and just vote on it?
The billing is set up by the ambulance service itself, it's their director can set that up. And we are here just asking for approval to let him move forward with that process.
I understand. The question was, are you going to try and pass this without meeting with Erlanger, or Memorial, or Parkridge?
And my answer to your question is, is I don't know what meetings has been done, what ones, or which ones have been done. The chief is, Chief Airbanks is the one that would be meeting with these people, or at least talking to them. I don't know if he has or not.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, who, who's next? Mr. Peak, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. But yet, you met on July fourteenth with Tenova, is that correct? So you were involved in the meeting, so why would you not be in the meetings with these others? You're the chair of the EMS committee. So I would assume that you would also reach out and discuss this politics one oh one. I know everyone of y'all know how to play politics, trust me on that one. Uh, grandstanding and doing something like this is just, I think it's evil, it's just, why not go talk to them in person? Why not call them all to a meeting and discuss your intentions and the issues and the problems? And trust me, us not having four to only six of our ambulances out on one given day is probably the majority of the problem. And I know them sitting at the hospital does not help, but if we had more ambulances on the road, we may not have that problem at all. Um, so everybody's problems are spiraling into one problem, but my biggest problem is what's the legality of this? Do we have the legal authority to even implement something like this? And that's what, that's my only question, that's all I want to know. But sometimes I think some of this stuff we talk about is as bizarre as the Polk County Commission trying to charge the Chamber of Commerce and us, Bradley County, for using the word "okay" sometimes. So sometimes I just have to scratch my head up here, but I'll be looking forward to hearing the legality from our county attorney. And if she says it's okay, then we'll move forward. But even if we move forward, if she says it's okay, I would still like to bring all of, everybody that has a part in this to the table, out of courtesy, and say, hey, let's talk about this, let's see what we can do to move forward. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Anything else from you, Commissioner Hughes, committee replies?
I think I've stirred up enough.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Epperson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, everything is doing good in the first district, but I would, at this time, would like to, since our days are numbered, or my days are numbered, and county commission meetings, I do would like to point out that, and appreciate the county commission, the mayor, and the Dr. Cash, and the Bradley County School Board. Uh, I know I've mentioned over the last three years several times about the Hopewell driveway that goes back behind the school. And I'm proud to say that that happened during this commission, and it has been completed. And I also would like to thank this commission and the mayor for the McDonald's School. Um, basically, we were going to raise three schools, and McDonald's School was going to be one of the last ones that we did. And prior to my discussion with the commission and pointing out that that's our major liability out of all three of those schools, this commission voted to make sure that that school was one of the first to happen and come down. So just wanted to, at this time, and take the opportunity to thank the commission, the mayor, and the Bradley County Schools for making all that stuff happen in the first district. Thank you. That's it, Mr..
Thank you, Mr. Epperson.
Thank you.
Now, moving into the agenda, out of May, Commissioner Peak.
Um, yeah, what do we got here? Bradley County landfill, Commissioner Peak, I think some, I'm not sure, some here. Oh, okay, so we're recognizing Republic. Come on, guys.
Commissioner, uh, good to see you all again. Uh, if you don't remember, my name is Mike Klassen. Uh, sorry I couldn't be here last time. Um, I'm the general manager for our Middle Tennessee post-collection operations for Republic, which of course includes your Bradley County landfill. Sure you're all feeling a little bit of fatigue from this issue somewhat, I know it's been a bit grueling. Um, you know, certainly when David was up here last time, what we tried to do was really listen to what your feedback was, um, hear you, and sort of adjust what we're looking to do um, on the county's behalf at your facility, uh, to really include some of those key themes of issue that you all had pointed out that, that you were concerned with, and really felt like those centralized around the topics of, um, community involvement, environmental impact, and transparency. Um, and so I believe you all have a copy of the email that, um, we had put together, and I'm not sure, Chairman, you would like me to read it for the public record, or?
Whatever you wanted.
Your call, what you think is best, I don't want to waste your time, but.
You don't have to read the whole thing, but you can hit.
Okay, yeah, sure, so I'll, I'll highlight a few of these things, you know, again, um, you know, we're charged as operators of your landfill facility to operate it, um, in a way that maximizes the financial return while also being environmentally safe, responsible, um, and good stewards of that asset as well as of the community. And so that's really what sort of spurns all of this. Um, again, we've taken into account your concerns and really, um, would like to propose, sort of as part of this, let's call it a, um, a package, if you will, um, with the solidification, to, uh, liquid solidification, to sort of alleviate some of your concerns. So, um, what we've proposed, uh, on the topic of transparency, is on a monthly basis to, you know, I've asked many times, what exactly are we bringing liquid? You know, Commissioner Hughes especially, I mean, we did our best to sort of give a summary of what those items would be. Um, however, again, it's, it's just really impossible to know exactly until the program's up and running. What we would like to do is on a monthly basis, provide a report to the county detailing the types and quantities of all liquid waste received for solidification disposal. And that will give us an opportunity to, um, any questions about those particular types of waste, how it's processed and managed, and how it performs in the solidification process, we can then answer those questions as they arise on a, on a case-by-case basis. We can talk about every single one of them, if that's your preference, no problem.
Yeah, I'm sorry to cut you off, but just for a quick question, I want, you're going to supply us a list like this if we approve this, and there's something on that list that we do not want brought in. Will you stop bringing it in, or are you going to continue to bring it in?
Um, I'd have to look at what our contract currently says about.
How about the contract we have now, or the one?
Yeah, our, our existing contract that we have, which would, of course, govern everything.
Which has nothing in there about what we can control unless we have. If we approve this, basically what we're doing is giving you authorization to bring in liquid waste. There's nothing in the original contract that says that you can't bring in certain items, as far as I know. Unless it's added to this, that we can do that, it will not be in the original contract.
Commissioner Hughes, if you don't mind, if you'll let him go through this process before we, we pick everything that he says, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Couple other items on the transparency standpoint, so, uh, you know, really, obviously, the interested citizens in the community is someone who are extremely, and rightfully so, interested in what's happening at the landfill. So, um, we'd like to propose holding semi-annual meetings, hosting them at the landfill for interested citizens to come and actually kind of see how we're operating, get a glimpse behind the curtain as to how the waste generated in this community and surrounding is managed, and offer them a forum to listen and discuss any issues or concerns that they have at that time. Um, also, would like to use that opportunity to look at the prior period's odor monitoring data, so we're all talking about the same thing, and can really, the data to direct those, those discussions. Um, and finally, for, for you all, uh, looking to offer to host an onsite luncheon for all of you to come out for a guided bus tour of the landfill, um, really a meet and greet with our leadership, build some trust there, um, and some reliability with a relationship, and give kind of a summary of key information related to waste management at the landfill. Um, so on the community impact standpoint, uh, we recently had a meeting with the mayor, Professor John Hissy from the Lee University and Keep America Beautiful about a project at the Bradley County landfill. Um, we would look to, that was on the twenty-seventh of July, we had that meeting. Uh, we would look to, uh, fund, expand, and maintain that nature center, which is currently, uh, had existed at one point at the landfill, but is currently, um, not really functioning as a nature center, has kind of fallen into disrepair. So look to partner to grow that into something that could be a place, um, where we would happily host tours from schools, or bring other environmental interest groups in. Again, our, our goal is there to sort of help, help build that trust, uh, here in the community. Um, and then the second piece to that is we would like to, um, offer, uh, resuming acceptance of cash payments from residential customers at both the Scale House and at the Citizen Convenience Center. And we've heard you, um, that's clearly something that, um, several in particular citizens find not, not working for them, so we would, would put that as part of this as well. Finally, on the environmental accountability standpoint, uh, we would like to meet in person with leaders of community interest groups. Um, I think you all know who some of those, those folks are in particular, and other interested citizens to listen and respond to concerns they have related to specifically the liquid solidification process, but also to provide sort of a live demonstration of how that works. I do think, um, there's sort of like this veil in front of it where it's hard to understand exactly what we're proposing, so having an opportunity where people can come up and see live what exactly we're doing, maybe get some comfort with it there, um, I think would, would, would be a benefit. And, uh, finally, to schedule a training session to help us jointly understand the existing odor monitoring data. I think that, uh, training session is already scheduled. Um, and what determinations some of our citizen leaders believe this data tells us. Um, of note, we already are kind of doing that, uh, Mr. Rourke communicates directly with us on a regular basis. Um, we don't still really understand what some of that monitoring data is saying. I think, um, it would, all of us good to come together, look at the data, uh, as one group, and really make some determinations from it there. But certainly anytime there are complaints, one-off complaints, anything like that, including from Miss Pass recently, um, those get passed along to us, to our onsite management, and we immediately go investigate those to see if we can, um, you know, confirm those, the presence of those, and if so, if we can drill down to what exactly has happened. So, um, you know, the final item on here that I, that I put there was just in the interest of transparency, is that we wanted to communicate to the commission that there's currently an RFP out for disposal of municipal wastewater sludge from Cobb County, Georgia. Um, there's two particular wastewater plants, and that is due on August twenty-fifth. Um, we're currently evaluating pricing and anticipate putting a proposal together there. Um, again, you know, we have a certain amount of wet waste tons we can bring into the landfill. Um, if solidification is happening and we're able to use that as sort of industrial sludge, not municipal wastewater sludge, that will consume all of those wet tons and prevent us from being able to take a sizable amount, um, in something like this case. But again, that's only in the interest of transparency, we wanted to be very upfront with everyone that that's, that's coming.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, I've got some questions, I know Commissioner Slater, and then Commissioner Peak, and I'm sure there'll be more.
Thank you, Mr. Claus, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Clausen, I appreciate you being here today. I, I do have several questions that I'd like to, for you to try to answer. The first being, if this commission votes down the liquid solification, are you still committing to your transparency, community impact, envi, and environmental accountability? Are these events on this list still going to take place?
What I would say is those are very important things, and we want to work with the commission directly to figure out what exactly those items should be. Um, I can't guarantee that we're, everything on here is going to happen. Again, we're looking to do this as kind of a, an overall initiative combined, but, you know, we're certainly open to having those discussions further, um, outside of this particular question.
And I guess part of my frustration is you can't tell us what you plan to bring in. And, and I, I don't understand that, why you can't specifically say what you plan to take.
Sure, and I can certainly understand that that's a frustration, and I, and I hear you. Um, we did attempt to provide a list of types of materials that would fall into this program that we would realistically expect to take. There's, there's infinite number of liquid wastes in the marketplace, just as there are an infinite number of solid wastes in the marketplace. And I couldn't, as a, all I've done my entire career is operate landfills, um, and design them. I couldn't sit up here and tell you all of the special solid wastes we would take at Bradley County landfill, or that we do take. Um, but we have to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis, and as each comes in, there is a very regimented, structured process, both from Republic corporately and from TDEC that requires every single one of those appropriately analyzed, profiled for compatibility, and managed in a very specific manner. And that is part of our monthly inspections that TDEC comes on to arm at the landfill. So there's that opportunity as well. TDEC actually looks at those things that they've approved, make sure that we as operators are, uh, managing them in accordance with that.
Okay, my final question is, you heard Miss Pass speak earlier about the entire month of June, the issues, the smell. Can you tell us what that was, what happened the entire month of June?
So I certainly am not going to stand up here and, I mean, I totally believe Miss Pass in that she, what she was experiencing. Um, we did not have complaints from others in the community. Um, a lot of those filtered their complaints through, uh, Mr. Rourke, I know he's been up here to talk and would have been here today, except I think he has, um, a medical situation, and so, um, he's been communicating with us about that as well. Um, we did not get any other complaints from other members of the community that would have been. My opinion is if everyone would have been experiencing that, um, for the entire month of June, we certainly would have heard of it. Um, community members are not shy, nor should they be of voicing concern, have them. So, um, nothing, nothing changed process-wise, TDEC gave us all of their normal approvals. There was no, uh, reports to TDEC of complaints. So, um, again, when, when those complaints come to us, we go ahead and immediately go out to the homes of those individuals, try and, uh, confirm them from our own beliefs, or from our own, um, investigations, but we're not able to do so in this particular case, so I don't know of any other complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Slater? I was wrong about Commissioner Peak, Commissioner Thompson, and then Commissioner Epperson.
When are you going to start taking cash?
So, I, again, some of it hinges on, on the approval, uh, or not, of the, of the commission. Um, I think, you know, if this were to be approved, and we have kind of this whole package of, of items, that we'd be ready to begin taking cash, um, immediately upon the commission's approval.
Other words, not going to do nothing until it's approved.
So again, to Commissioner Slater's question, we're, I'm not, we're not up here giving ultimatums by any stretch of the imagination. We 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 want to work with you and to be good stewards of your landfill that we operate on your behalf. There are very good reasons why the cash was stopped, almost entirely related to the safety of our employees. However, we understand that is an important issue for you, it's, I'm not shutting the door on that by any stretch of the imagination. I'm just trying to address this as a package now and certainly can continue having discussions down the line, absolutely.
Commissioner Emerson, and then Commissioner Crown, and then Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I had a question. This solidification process, is this a, for this body, county government body, happened to approve this before you would be able to go on? Is that mandated by the state TDEC?
It is through Jackson Law, so this is technically a new solid waste processing permit. In many states, this would just wrap right up into the existing annual solid waste disposal permit and wouldn't wouldn't be that, but in Tennessee it's viewed a little differently. So that's that's the driver here of why it's coming.
Okay, and and I understand that, like I say, if we were to approve this solidification process. And the volume of that would come off of a total of where you wouldn't be able to take on the sludge that you are currently taking on from Georgia. But you still would be able to take some, is, am I hearing that correct?
We still would be able to take some potentially, so our preference is to as much solidific, we want to maximize those wet waste tons using liquid solidification. It's a, it's a preferred process for us, it's more local, the the revenue opportunities are greater for both us and for the county. And so we're going to do everything we can or would do with your approval, everything we can, all of that capacity for wet waste disposal to consume all of it using the industrial sludge material that we.
So the way I'm taking this, if we were to approve this, we would basically be amending the contract to allow this process to happen?
There's no modification or amendment to the contract that we have, this is just a a permit through the state of Tennessee.
Just a process that the state is requiring.
That's correct.
Okay, what what guarantees us that if we did approve this, a new process that you all would like to do to be able, for financial reasons? Because I negotiate contracts all the time and it's give and take, and I know that I posed like three questions to y'all and basically was told no on every one of them. Basically, one of them was that, you know, could you give this body of government, the Bradley County, the authority to shut that. Process down temporary or indefinitely if we deemed that it was necessary? Because you know, this is Bradley County and this is our community and we and our people that are live around that, it would be nice if we would have that ability to do that and. And what I'm hearing is y'all are going to do everything just right and do that everything to TDEC's requirements and stuff, I don't see why that that would be an issue. To grant that to this body of government to be able to shut that process down if if we deemed it to be necessary.
So I think the the concern would be that, you know, rules change all the time and what what deemed to be necessary is is a very undefined determination. And it could be that, you know, it's sort of, it's impossible for us to to project the future of what would happen. I think in in all cases, just like you do now with solid waste, same same exact process, right? Y'all are trusting TDEC to be the reviewer and enforcement body to cover that, but but when there are issues. We get together and we talk about them and we work them out, just like we have done with related to odors. Have done with other concerns that have been brought up to us, you know, that's 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 what we do as operators of your facility. Having that working relationship, I think, is the foundation. I would also say, you know, that is what we tried to do here is is have some give. You know, again, this isn't, we're sharing in the in the financial benefit of this program, not in exclusive one way. But we definitely understand that that's not the main driver for you all, the main driver is the safety of the environment and of your citizens. So that's what we tried to do, some of the items here is acknowledge that and 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 put some give out there to really help extend a hand, sort of get this get this done.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Crown and Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, I've got a couple of pointed questions and remarks for you, sir, and for more you're around me, you'll find noted for pointed. Couple of months back, I asked one of your representatives, was it not true that the reason for the drop in sludge to our landfill was due to Cobb County? Not you, you all not getting the bid from Cobb County? And I was told no, so, and I was told that, I think if I recall correctly, that they were going a different direction. Okay, now I hear from you that you all are going to bid on the Cobb County contract coming up. So I find there naturally a disparity there. Then I'll say one thing, I've been told three times by your people, cash is coming to the landfill, okay? And the last time I was told it would be the extent of a pickup truck or less, and I was happy with that because our citizens, a lot of them. Do not deal in plastic, they have cash. And now I get the, basically, I'm I'm a little different here. I took your remark as uncommittal on the cash part as an intimidation to passing the the thing coming up for a vote. I'd just like to tell you point blank, you've got a no vote from me, who was probably going to be a yes vote until you get cash taken out there at that landfill. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Crown, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to swing back around to the email that you sent us. Commissioner Slater asked a question and it's it's a yes or no answer to me. And so I'm going to re-ask the question one more time, based on your email and your proposal to provide transparency, community impact. And environmental accountability, is that based on us passing the liquid sludge next week?
So everything that I included in here was based on doing all of this kind of as as one singular action. So that that is, that was the the goal and the genesis of this email. Again, that is is absolutely not to say that these things are off the table if it does not get passed next week, I think, and I'm sure you all agree. Probably are all tired of talking about this to a degree, so my hope was that, you know, get through next week. Then we can and we can certainly work through any of these additional items after that, after we kind of put this particular issue.
So if this doesn't pass, all of these things are off the table until you provide us with another proposal, correct?
I think in the immediacy, these things are, I wouldn't say off the table, but again, trying to do this all in one singular action. Moving forward, happy to talk about any of these things, it doesn't have to be a formal proposal, these things we can just do. We can sit down and we can talk and you can say, this is really important to us, we'd like you to focus on this, and we can work through doing those things. But again, I want to emphasize that none of this is is on or off, just looking to kind of do it all as as a singular action, or. If not, we can certainly talk through each of these things individually or together and work through.
Okay, and so obviously this is a work session where we kind of talk things out and work them out. Then the next meeting will be a voting session, and that's August the fifteenth. So I just find it interesting that in the proposal, basically you're stating that you have put out the RFP to Cobb County. And that's going to come back on August the twenty fifth. So next week on August the fifteenth, if the liquid does not pass, this email basically states that you will be taking in sludge. So we have an option, is the way I look at it in the email. Either we can accept your liquid sludge or you're going to go ahead and start retaking sludge. Otherwise known as an ultimatum.
So again, it's certainly not intended, this was intended for transparency, you know, where our contract with you all is to maximize the value of your asset. Landfill in in a responsible and environmentally compatible manner. To do that, we have to go out and find waste streams to bring into the landfill. So just to be clear, this was not something that we set up, this was something that was public, originated by that county. To any interested bidders, anywhere in the region, so again, it's something that we have an obligation to maximize the value of this asset on behalf of the county. So we're going, we're going to do that, and we need to do that in whatever compliant way we can, but we have to.
In my opinion, I value partnerships, I value partnerships with the hospital that we have. And I think we value our partnership with Republic. And just like I disagree with telling the hospital that we're going to charge them for something when that's not legal. I don't appreciate Republic coming up here and basically giving this commission an ultimatum that we're either going to pass the liquid. Or you're going to continue taking sludge. And if we don't pass the liquid, you're not going to provide the services that you have presented in this email. Doesn't look well on Republic and the partnership that we so value with Bradley County, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, Mr. Hughes, and then Commissioner Peak.
It's more of a list for Commissioner Slater, Commissioner Slater, you asked a pointed question, Miss Pace, or Pass, I'm sorry. Had came up and gave a a speech about having strewn over is June, July, so. And I found it, I found it ironic, I was reading in the environmental accountability from this email. You read the last line, it says, he recently commuted to us that no odors were observed in June or July. Which coincides with the, with when we were actively accepting industrial sludge, the same material we will be generating through solidification. I'm not saying that's the odor, but I'm just saying it sure is a coincidence.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Peak.
So the data that we get weekly or from Lori on the odors, did it show anything during that time? But my point is, is that it's a landfill, so we're going to have odors, can you guarantee that we won't have odor with the sludge that you bring in? Or with just regular household garbage or with solidification, can you guarantee no odor at all coming out of that landfill ever? Probably not, would we accept, do we have that in our contract that we want them to guarantee no odor? I guess we're going to have odor, so the only thing I can think to make everybody a hundred percent happy just be to shut the thing down, wouldn't you? Then we don't have to worry about it and then we'll just have mountains of garbage in our own backyards. So can you take cash tomorrow?
Yes, we can take cash tomorrow.
Would you please take cash tomorrow?
Yes, we can take cash tomorrow.
Would that make everybody happy on the cash part, if they started taking cash tomorrow?
But they've told us they were going to take cash and that's been, that has been a consistent theme in every conversation that we've had with them. And so Republic has known that we wanted them to take cash, and so him telling us that he's going to take cash tomorrow. I don't know that we can believe it till we see him taking cash tomorrow.
This guy's never actually stood up here and said he was going to take cash.
And that is true, and maybe before I say tomorrow, let's make sure that I have a proper process in place to take it, we'll do, we could do it quickly. Tomorrow might be a bit.
Stretching.
A bit, a bit quick for that, but we don't have the systems in place, but we'll, we can definitely accelerate that and make it happen.
That all, Commissioner Peak?
Well, my other point was that when I do contracts, I always put carrots in my contract to try to make them. So I don't see it as a bullying tactic or an ultimatum, I see it as a carrot to help us get to the point that they need us at, since it is a partnership. I won't be here in the next four years, so you guys make the best argument you can, we'll vote on it next week.
Thank you, Mr. Peak, Mr. Thompson, Commissioner Winters, and Commissioner Hughes.
Well, the only thing I've, through this whole thing that you were going to take cash and, you know, it's all about trust and people don't trust you anymore. And the reason they don't is you tell us one thing and then you come up and say, well, we're not going to do this until we pass this. And I thought, I thought the last that we'd heard that y'all were going to take cash and I don't want you to hold us hostage. On this boat, just to take cash.
Be sure if I, if I might, you know, I'm, I'm, just as you all are, I'm a person of my word. I I have never stood up here or told any of you that we would take cash and then not done it. So we're, we're talking to each other one on one now, face to face, and I'm telling you that we will proceed with with figuring out how to begin taking cash.
What did we hear about cash, I'd like to go back to the minutes on that, I believe they did sit up here one day and said they were going to take cash and were going to start at a certain time.
He's saying.
No, no, he didn't personally, somebody said it from your organization.
You heard it here and put it, put it in the minutes twice, we will, we will be, we will immediately begin working to figure out how to take cash.
I don't, I don't really agree with you, and I'm saying to hold us hostage and that's what it means on this boat. Because you won't pay cash if we don't pass the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, Commissioner Winters, and Commissioner Hughes.
If a gentleman tells me he's going to do something, I I think you're going to do that. But we're dealing with a one-sided contract, you you hold all of this till two thousand twenty-three, I guess. You can, can make this quid pro quo type thing, I get it. I did talk to some of your partners that live, work in the area today, one in particular, that was really so thankful that you didn't have sludge. He happens to be a party, as you know, there's dealers all through there. He has to go out in the parking lot, and he said, since you all have taken sludge away, he can go out and work work in the parking lot. We have major investments, you know, all around you, the industrial park being one that was shared by a lovely lady that just shared with us. We're going to have to make sure, you know, you could say you're going to bring sludge out of North, North Georgia, Georgia. But if that comes in here and does that and we lose businesses, then this contract could go pretty tough in a in a bad direction quickly. So there's some, there's some real benefits for you as well as for us in this. So sludge, when you say sludge is going to come back, not only that person is telling me that, but then all of us are going to get people. We don't want this kind of sludge coming back because of the health hazard, the odor that's there. You're trying to do business and you can't take your customers to an industrial park because of the odor. And that comes to us and made that decision ten years ago, set up that industrial park. Have you looked at other ways to, I'm I'm a city guy. Talks to me about being city and I I live it, but with, with the city, my garbage does not go to your place. My garbage goes to Athens, I don't like that, because I know what I'm putting out there on the on the steps for you to get. I know what, I know that, and I don't know what's coming from these other places. So have you looked at the possibility of going back with the city and seeing if there's something you can do with a city to get my people? You all pick up our garbage and get our proceeds from that, there's some ways to do this without having to go, I don't. We've tried to figure out this solidification stuff, and one pro tells us it's no problem at all, another person says beware of it. So what what do we do with it? So if you bring that in, then you put yourself in a real bind if there is something later on in this comes down the line, so. Have you all looked at all, I know that's a contract, another contract with the city, and I'm not, I'm not negotiating for the city at all, I'm not negotiating with the mayor of the city, I'm not, you know, you know that. But within that, there's, 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 there's money to be made there, it just has to be one in in one contract established where. Athens can't come down here and underbid what the city would pay, you can get what the city would pay, that'd be real good money for you all. And at the same time, you'd have, you'd be taking our, our. And at the same time, you'd have, you'd be taking our, our waste and we know where it's coming from and not have to take it. Have you tried that? Thought of that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know when that contract is up. I believe it's 2024. For that transportation in the city that goes to Athens. And we absolutely would anticipate putting a, a bid together. I'm certain the city is going to put that out to RFP.
That's a year away. But you would be looking at that?
Absolutely.
Are there other revenue streams? You're the man.
Believe me, if they're out there, I'm looking at them. So, you know, again, doing our best to maximize the value of this asset for, for both of us.
When you say Cobb County, we get nervous.
What's that?
When you say Cobb County, and you say you're going to bring, bring that in, then you see why we're saying that's, that's kind of, we don't want to hear. So can you give one other final, final thing about solidification? Simply share with us how you feel that solidification is so safe. Some sitting in this room, it's the worst thing could come.
So, you know, I've, I've, I've ran solidification pits myself. I've managed facilities that have them. I've seen them in action. I've lived with them every single day. So again, you know, I, I don't, I don't, can't speak to what others have experienced, but my guess is that they can't say the same. You know, this is a, a common practice in the state of Tennessee and nationally to handle liquid, non-hazardous liquid waste. It's, it's truly as simple as having a, a pit inside the lined footprint of the landfill. Having a, a solidification material like, like ash or Portland cement or wood chips. Then you then mix with an excavator with the liquids until it turns into a drier sludge material. Just like that, I mean, that material is already coming into us from other solidifiers in the Chattanooga, Cleveland. So that material is already coming in landfill and it's already disposed at Bradley County. We would just be actually solidifying it ourselves on site and then taking it directly in a truck right to the landfill active face and landfilling it just exactly as we do all other.
How deep do you put it? You put it in the ground?
Once it's disposed in the landfill, it just mixed right in with all of the daily, with the daily trash that comes just with everything else, just mixed right in there to the landfill active face.
You've seen it.
Absolutely.
You're telling us it's non-toxic.
It's, it's non-hazardous. Yeah, non-hazardous. Certainly, just like, I mean, all the, many materials in the landfill, if you ingest them or they, it would be toxic. But it's non, it's non-hazardous. Yeah, it's. And again, every single one of those liquid materials coming in is going to TDEC for them to review and approve and confirm that it is acceptable meeting their requirement.
Thank you, Commissioner Winters, Commissioner Hughes, and Commissioner Peak.
So TDEC doesn't perform any analytical testing themselves. There's a analytical profiling process where registered labs take that, those samples, provide it in a report, which then goes to TDEC for approval.
That's how they, they go off a list that's been given to them, in other words.
They go off the actual analytical profiles from certified lab.
The other question, um, my understanding, at one point cash was being accepted into the, the landfill for a short time, then it was stopped. The one thing, and even you've pointed it out tonight or today, is that, well, you know, you'll have to verify that through the contract. Contract has nothing in there about money, you accepting money, cash. So you don't have to, because it's not contractual. Since we're talking legality, say. I, you could accept cash today and stop it tomorrow. There's nothing that says you can't. There's nothing that says you have to accept it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Peak.
Well, first of all, he didn't say he had to verify if he could do cash through the contract. He said he needed to get it set up and it may take more than a day. Secondly, so just to, I don't think we understood this part. So right now, you're already taking solidified materials that you don't have to have a permit for because you're not solidifying them. So you're already taking the materials that are already solidified into our landfill.
That is correct.
You have to have a permit to actually solidify it on site. So that the places in Chattanooga and Bradley County that are solidifying it themselves don't have to fool with it, with a second or third party. They bring it directly to you and you do it for them.
That, that is correct. Yeah, I appreciate that clarification.
So right now, we are already taking the solidified materials. The permit is for them to solidify on site. Okay, I, I did not understand that. So thank you.
Any other question? Ask all Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a one question. And, and, and I've read your email and, and some of the stuff is good in there about how you're going to get with other organizations and things and try to beautify the area and things and. But in larger cities, well, going back, organic at this, where it decomposes, causes the most odor in a landfill, is that correct? And the organ, because in larger cities, what I'm hearing is they, they're putting in, they're, the, the landfill operators are putting out programs trying to inform the public about composting, doing private, and trying to keep all that out of the landfill and trying to keep the odors down and things. Y'all have any plans on doing any of that kind of programs of trying to try to combat this odor problems that we're having in this landfill? Because I know although, I've read, I've read up a lot since we've been dealing with this landfill for the last three years about that. And I, that's what I read that the larger cities throughout the United States is doing. Because that's the number one reason the odors are being caused is by the organic breakdowns that happens in the landfills. Do y'all have any plans on implementing and things like that, that the larger cities do?
When, when it comes to compost, I think it's more of a, a diversion goal along with household hazardous waste, recycling, those types of items. Certainly odor, offsite odor is a byproduct of that. I think it's more, you know, it's a better use of sort of renewing that material into a beneficial use for the community. So, you know, composting programs are, are great ideas. We certainly support them. Starts with having that material source separated. So separating that material at the curb. Once you pick it all up and it's mixed into a garbage can together, it's nearly impossible to pull that out. What a lot of times the larger cities are doing is you're actually separating that material in a different bin. So when it gets collected, it's all a, a homogenous or a similar material.
I'm not saying that for y'all to do it. They're, they're actually promoting the public to do so. Private composting pile or in their backyards and, and basically trying to keep it out of the landfills. And they say it's working.
Yeah, I love that idea.
Some of the, the landfills that are in some of the larger cities, i- it's reducing the odor and, and complaints and things. And you're being able to operate smoothly and, and not having to be interrogated like you're being interrogated right now. But I was just wondering if you, if y'all were aware of what the larger cities are doing and trying to reduce the odor. Because what I hear, that's the organic breakdown in a landfill is the number one causing odors of landfill.
Yeah, no, great, great points. And that's certainly something we would support here in the community. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I would ask commissioners, obviously it's been 45 minutes worth of discussion. We've got a detailed email list here. If you have any other questions, communicate with Republic about anything prior to next week. So you have all your questions answered. Because obviously, we've, we've had this discussion many times and there's more questions that come up. So thank you for the, going through the interrogation. We, we appreciate you trying to be open to that.
Absolutely. And I just want to reiterate that no matter what happens with the vote, I mean, we're here long-term as you're representative running your facility. We're going to continue to do a great job to listen to you, to hear areas where you think we could be doing better and, and work on that, whether or not it is in our contract to do that. So you have, you have that straight from me and looking forward to do that either way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate. Item B, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. This is a motion to accept a Nikon total station from the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. And for more details, you can see page two. But this is used at crime scenes and wrecks to measure distances. This is a donation from Hamilton County. BCSO currently has one of these, but it's an older one. So we are grateful to Hamilton County for wanting to donate this to us.
Okay. Like any questions about that? Anyone? I guess pretty simple. Thank you. Item C, Commissioner Hughes. You got your microphone on?
Thank you. It's a resolution to resume from forestry agricultural residential district to C2 general commercial district property located 5943 and 5945 Georgetown Road and identified by tax mount 026 parcel 002.02. And that can be seen on pages three and four. This property went through planning pass unanimously. It has actually already been operated as a business now. It's Cordell paving. It's the property. But apparently he is looking at selling his property and just wants to make sure that it's not, that whoever buys its hands not tied by that.
Any questions concerning that? All right. This time, any communication from the audience? Come on up here. State your name and address and you've got five minutes.
Elmer Earls, 156 York Circle, south side of landfill. So the thing is, they said they lost the contract about the sludge out of Georgia. But now they're coming with sludge out of Chattanooga, which I was told that the company said processed the stuff in Chattanooga, does it in a containment building where the stink don't get out. This is some of the stuff that, like, from BAS Elf that was dumped in the landfill, which was acid, which about killed me. It's going to be, it's solidified. And it's being brought in now, which we're not having a problem. But if they're going to bring it in, in liquid form, then it's going to be a problem because that stuff's going to get in air as soon as you open the valve on the truck and dump it in the pit and it'd be there all day. So the thing is, we can't put up with, like you guys were saying, south end's going to explode with businesses. We got potential, what, 200 homes off of Tom Roland Parkway. It's going to be built, industrial park. And then many times Kenneth Roark said how bad the sludge smell was in the industrial park. So the thing is, I don't think we should go and do again what? We couldn't get out the last time when the last resolution was done. Because this resolution has no out. But the contract that Sand Tech wound up with, it said that it was for the, the health, well-being of the public. So the thing is, with that resolution with the sludge deal, we got, we got no help. So this resolution, we have no out. So it's going to be worse with the acid and gases coming off there that you can't breathe. And they're already, they have not totally stopped the sludge. So they're still making money. They're not losing money. It's just money they haven't made. If you lost money, it's like you done a bad investment and you lost it. If you had it, money. So this is, this is a totally different deal than losing money. It's just the potential of what we can make, it's what the landfills dwell on. But our breathing and our health in Bradley County, and it affects everybody. So the thing is, guys, we appreciate if you're having your heart to hold it down where we can keep the air clean and make this town grow the way it should. And the potential of more houses and businesses, they're going to make up tonnage and make up money. The potential of what they think they can make of the sludge, liquid and liquefy, I mean, solidify it here. But anyway, God bless, guys. Thank you all for helping.
Thank you, Mr. Earls. Come on up, sir. That's your name, even though I remember you, Al.
Name is Al Kessley. I live at 281 Banbury Drive. I was hoping I wouldn't have to come back and say anything about this. I thought it was all over. I guess the question I've got is who is the boss of the landfill? Is it him? Or is it the commission? It's like the daddy, uh, son trying to tell the daddy what they, he's going to do. I've never heard such arrogance in all my life. And some of you have pointed out ultimatums. And then he turns around and says, yeah, we can, we can permit cash. Well, what, why did you? And he says, rules change. Last time, the guy said accidents do happen. There's no such thing as an accident. They are caused. I'd be glad to sit down and talk about some very specific things. Better put glasses on. I'm nervous and I'm upset. Can you permit me to go over a minute?
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm going to read this.
Just keep, keep everything to us.
Evidently, somebody got notes to Republic. I think I figured it out. I listen very well to everybody, what you say. I look at your faces. I look at your eyes. I can learn a lot in a little bit of time. Listen to this. In health and environmental, we look at aspects. I haven't heard him talk about aspect or impacts. We look at what happens there. Aspect is anything or act that causes an impact. I'm having trouble reading my writing. Aspects can cause good impacts, bad impacts. Good example of that is these masks that we wear, COVID masks. Some good impacts is, in my case, covers up a lot of ugliness. Other people too. It prevents things from being carried out. Ladies, if you don't want to, you don't have to wear any makeup on that day. But there's some bad things. It causes people not to breathe very well. Look at all these things that these guys are talking about. Listen to this. Liquid waste that Republic seeking approval to dispose their landfill is an aspect. Some of the impacts are bad. And some have a bad impact on our environment. What are some examples of impacts? We talked about smells, but I like to say, in environmental field, we call it emissions. And so many of them are allowed, parts per million or whatever. Can you tell us what the parts per.
Sir, sir, address it, address us.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm, I'm new at this. Greenhouse gases, land contamination, water pollution, air pollution, groundwater pollution. All of these can cause serious health issues and discomfort. Cancer, smells, all kinds of things. Don't go to sleep on me, please. They can cause short-term effects and long-term effects. They can occur locally or they can show up miles away. Such as through leaching, groundwater runoff, entering sub-ground water system, water supplies. Now, Elmer was talking about these processes where they're covered. I haven't heard them talk about what their process is for solidification. I'm talking about very specific process. This is so important that the federal government has strict, very specific regulations to address hazardous waste. What, what kind of examples are hazardous waste? Asbestos, chemical, pesticides, herbicides, prodendicides, oil, paint, acid, radioactive materials, biological waste, bloodborne pathogens, sharps, body fluids. I wonder what they would have to say about their two facilities in St. Louis, what's happening out there with the fires going on? What are they doing, correct? I wonder what the people in St. Louis would tell you in regards to the liquid waste that they're wanting to get approval for, what is in the liquids? Including by volumes, okay? That's very important. How many are considered hazardous? And I'm talking about by regulation, not by what they say. How do they know what's in the liquids? Have the impacts been determined? If so, who did it? I'm about through. Are the impacts regulated? What are the specific local, state, and federal regulations that they're using? I wonder if they could tell us. If I asked to, to name one of them, I wonder, could he name one? You could ask, I can't. What about the permits that's required? Do they have them? What are the commissioners concerned? And I've heard them. You all have asked excellent questions, very good questions. Have they been satisfactorily addressed? What are the community concerns? Have they been satisfactorily addressed? What experience has Republic had with incidents, what they call accidents? Rep said accidents do happen. You heard what he said? Well, rules change. We saw that, didn't we? It's all or nothing, the package, and then he turns around and says, yeah, we'll take cash. He just changed the rule, didn't he? Runaway. Just like run away from Biden and Nancy Pelosi. Can't trust them. So, when did these incidents occur? How many times did they occur? How often did they occur? What were the effects? Were any of the effects irrevocable? Do we know that? What corrective and preventive action did they take? Somebody said, well, you're gonna have, gonna have odors. That's true. But what kind of odors are we smelling? That's the question we ought to be asking. Not odors, but what kind of gases are being emitted? What are we breathing?
Thank, thank you, sir. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to wrap it up. I've got to, I've got to move on.
I have just one minute.
Sir, I've already given you more than time that's allotted. I've given you four minutes. I, I appreciate the information. You've made your point. Anyone else want to speak before the commission? Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Peak?
I've got a question for the engineer.
Okay. Al, Al, she has a question for you.
I had a question for you. So, from how I understand it, we have a contract with Republic that we can't renegotiate. It's one of those contracts. You can't renegotiate. Yes, we own the landfill, but they own the contract, don't. So, we can't tell them what they can and cannot take in. And they're already taking solidification, as we already said. They just want a permit to solidify on site. So, let me ask you this, since you're an engineer, what is the solution? What does the community actually want? Because if we shut the landfill down, there's nowhere to take your trash. So, what is it exactly? I've never heard this out of anybody. Besides shutting the landfill down, what is it that the community wants? Because we can't tell them to not take sludge, and we can't tell them they can take sludge. When they stop taking sludge, we still had as many complaints as we did when they didn't ta- or did take sludge. So, whether they do or don't, the complaints are still the same. So, I just want to know personally, what is it, as an engineer, that you, what's the solution?
I could tell you a lot. I don't have time, but I will. I can. Does, does the word sludge appear in contract?
Yes, it does. They can take anything.
What does it say about sludge?
Says they can take any of it.
They can. Okay. But what they take in, there's something called assumption, okay? That they are abiding by the rules and regulations by state, local, and federal. So, I would ask the question, what regulations are they using to regulate this sludge and then solidification process?
And we rely on TDEC to do that, and they send us reports, and they are never, not in compliance according to TDEC. So, that's the only, that's the only people we have to rely on.
Well, I would ask the question, what is in this liquid? What are they gonna make it into solids, rum? Did you know that sharps have been found out at the landfill? Did you know that? Know what sharps are? Needles.
Where else would they go? Where else would they go but to a landfill, though? When they put them in the red box hanging in the hospital, where do we think they go? They go to a landfill, most likely our landfill.
They're handled in a very special way.
Yeah, most likely our landfill, but my point is that we're already taking the solidification, so I, I just don't see a solution. It's either they do or they don't. But I appreciate your time, and me and you need to talk afterwards, so I can get a better understanding.
Well, I would ask one question. What is their written procedure for solidification? If I saw that, I could tell you a lot.
Okay.
And it's gotta be protected from rainwater, just like Elmer was talking about. You don't ever process anything in the rain, and just to put it out there, mix it up, and make it into a solid, does that get rid of any radioactive waste? No, it's still in the ground. That's why you have underground fires that break out. Then you can't stop them. St. Louis, look that up.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you. Yeah, come on up, Ms. Pass.
The, the way you control odor is cover. There's not enough cover. When it rains, it washes the cover off. This is a problem with Tennessee, which I, Mr. Rourke and I both have asked to work with Representative Mark Hall to get the laws changed, and we're gonna ask to work with the new representative. Number two, what he is talking about in that, what he read about into your little email there, I read, y'all, this is, comes from Republic. They already have this in place. They have been operating this landfill for almost a year. This should already be happening, what he is giving you an ultimatum about. Please go to the website and read their information, where it says, it says community. Just read all of it. And number three, where he said there wasn't any complaints in the month of June, I will have y'all go ask Mr. Rourke. He comes to my neighborhood when I call him. He goes on Thomas Road. That's where the odors start, and it comes up the hill. But no, nobody's calling TDEC again, because TDEC has failed this community for three years. But yet, Harry McCann came the other, up the interstate the other day, and said he smelled the odor from the landfill on the interstate. But he's not gonna tell y'all that. Please, I'm asking y'all, go to their site, read what they already say, and see that he's, he's, it's not right. They're already supposed to be doing the transparent, already.
Thank you, Ms. Pass. Anybody else want to speak before the commission? Yes, sir. State your name and address when you get up there, sir. Thank you.
My name's Edgar Swafford, and I live at seven-seven-five Boss Springs Trail. I've got a short question. Over along the APD forty there, is you, right in the edge of the industrial park there, where they're dumping, been dumping all those tires. Are they growing? Because they got more, seem like sitting out there in containers. Are, are they gonna get rid of them? Some of them been sitting there for about four months, three months.
Miss Slater.
I think those, Mr. Swafford, I think those containers are waiting to be sent back to the landfill to be disposed of, and there are still tires around that Stone Lake, around that area that need to be picked up. We have stopped picking those up in the warmer months because of snakes and mosquitoes and things like that, and they're scheduled, I believe, in the end of September or October to begin picking those up again.
Well, the containers are catching water, and we know we've got plenty of water, so.
Mr. Hollingshed, do you know when those containers will be picked up? Can, can you try to get us a date? Okay. If you'll just let Ms. Moultrie know, then I can let Mr. Swafford know. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Al, or Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to wrap up this lengthy conversation that we've had today, because we have people from the community that are here, and this kind of piggybacks off of Commissioner Peak's question, what does the community want done? Because we're, we're looking at a choice next week, okay? You've heard that from Republic. Either we can approve the liquid solidification, or they're gonna bring back sludge. So, either we have a choice to vote for the liquid, or they're gonna bring back sludge. So, that's, that's how we have to leave it today. That's the reality of it. Thank you for all participating today, and your opinions are always very valuable.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Anyone else additionally want to speak from the commission, for the commission? Okay. Announcements. Next bidding voting session, August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, here at the courthouse at noon. Upcoming events, City Phil's Open House, August fourteenth, from two to four, at twenty, excuse me, twelve-fifty-three Wilson Avenue Southeast. Finance Committee will meet August fifteenth, immediately following the commission meeting next Monday. Reception Honor and Outgoing Law Enforcement Committee Chair Erica Davis will be August sixteenth at ten-thirty, and McDonald, McDonald Ruertan Community Meeting, August twentieth from four to seven.